Be given by Pastor Tommy Williams of Trinity United Methodist Church. Before we stand, Ms. Pastor Williams, you can't come to the podium. I will ask if everyone, please, silence your cell phones, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the council and staff, thank you for the welcome. Let's pray. Lord, we're gathered to do the work of our city, and we thank you for those who have been elected or appointed to fulfill that responsibility. God, we pray your blessing on each one of them and on the work that they do this day. We pray not only for the success of the city's work, but we pray this day for the way in which the work is done. We know, oh, Lord, that you care about the work and the spirit of the work. So bless each council member, mayor, staff, and those attending today to do the work entrusted with humility, with grace, with insight, wisdom. We thank you for the gifts of each person serving, and we pray you would guide them toward what is best for all of our citizens. Help them to be future-focused, people-centered, trusting in your spirit to give them places of agreement and unity where it is most needed. God, we thank you for their willingness to step forward to serve. We know it's an awesome responsibility, and we give thanks for the sacrifices they give each and every day to do that. We pray your blessing upon them this day and all the days of their life. We ask this prayer in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Please join us, if you so choose, to the pledge of our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mouton.
Present.
Mayor Protim Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Thomas Tyler, 26 years of being on the Silsby City Council. Thank you for joining us today. So at this time, we have one recognition, and I would like to call to the podium our new city manager, Mr. Kenneth Williams. Will you please come forward?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, and all of the people of Beaumont. Thank you for your tremendous support. I prepared some notes here because I don't want to mistakenly call Beaumont Buta. So I've done that, made that mistake before. So I'm going to try to stick to the script and make sure that doesn't happen, but if it happens, please forgive me. You know, this is quite a place. This is quite a scene that we are experiencing here today. You know, in the words of Nelson Mandela, he said, "Everything's impossible until it's done." And so today, we're doing something that probably was thought impossible at one time. So this is a great occasion for the city of Beaumont. I just want to thank Mayor Mouton and the Beaumont City Council, each of you, for your support in selecting me as city managers for this great city of Beaumont. And getting to this point, too, I would also like to recognize the prior city manager, Mr. Kyle Hayes. People don't understand the task of a city manager. It's a tough job, so I understand. So whatever Kyle did over those years, I just want to commend him for his work here in the city of Buta. Forty years. I was there fourteen years. Beaumont, Beaumont. Councilmember Getz, just gig me when I do that. Also, I'd like to recognize Mr. Chris Moon. Chris, would you stand, please? Let's give Chris a hand for the fantastic job. Chris, thanks for holding things together for us. Again, it's difficult for city manager. We're the only ones in the town with that title. There's no wonder that we can't pick up a phone and call somebody and ask them about what do we need to do. So thank you for what you've done and what you've sacrificed, and I look forward to working closely with you and us doing some great things in the city of Beaumont. But before I go too far, at least, I have a difficult ride home today. I want to introduce my wife, Cynthia Williams. Please stand. That's Cynthia Kennegroo Williams. She was, Cynthia was actually born in Jasper, Texas. She's relatives of the Shankles, the Strahan's, and the Peacocks and all those families. And yes, she's related to Michael Strahan, they're cousins. And she also authorized me to take this assignment, but only because it gets her closer to her grandkids. Otherwise, it would have been hard to get her to go along with this. But I thank her for her sacrifices and what she's done for allowing us to do this because it's us. We come as a team, basically. It's not just me. I could not have done it without her saying, "Okay, I'm fine with it." However, for an effective introduction, I've asked a couple of longtime friends and acquaintances to come and share a few minutes with you about me. Sometimes someone else can tell your story better than you. So I'm going to ask two people, Mr. Thomas Tyler from Silsby to share a few words with you, and Mr. Bob Killam of Lumberton. And Mr. Tyler will go first.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank y'all for allowing me an opportunity to speak today on Mr. Williams' behalf. I take it as an honor to be over here, be up here to speak to him, to you all concerning him. I've been knowing him for twenty-something years, and I'm telling you, I think Beaumont's going to be blessed to have him. I mean, what you see in him is what you get. He do put in hard work, and they always tell me, "Hard work pays off." And so I think he's going to be a great asset to y'all community, and if y'all ever need my assistance, I'm right down the road, 25 miles down the road from Silsby where I'm located. And, you know, back in, I think it might have been somewhere, I can be a little bit off on my years, but I think in '05, we tried to hire him. Okay? And we had a several vote to hire him, and by the time he went back to Lufkin to give us two weeks' notice, next thing you know, his money flew up. Well, small country town like Silsby, we couldn't get out there. But I appreciate him when he did fly for us. I mean, we wanted him, but we just couldn't put the money out there, and Lufkin upped the money to make sure they kept him home. But I think he's going to be great. I thank you for everybody just allowing me a chance to work with everybody. I think y'all are going to see a big difference. And Chris, I've been keeping up with you. I appreciate all your hard work you've done, and I really, I'm really looking forward to just sitting back and just watching you two operate. I think y'all, I think that team will come together well. And thank y'all very much for allowing me the opportunity to come up here and speak on Kenneth Williams. And Kenneth, good luck to you. And thank you very much.
Well, Madam Mayor and City Council, thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Bob Killam. Some of you may have, I don't know how many now, but I've been Coach Killam all my life just about. Matter of fact, oh, Mr. Samuel over there, his daughter kicked our butt when I was coaching at Lumberton, and she was at Ozan. Look at him sitting back there like a proud daddy. Well, you better be, she's good. And, but I did have the honor of coaching Thomas Tyler's daughter at Silsby. All right? So, you know, sports has been big to me. If it's all right, I'd like, can I bring Kenneth up here for just a second?
Sure.
Come here, Kenneth. And I've known Kenneth the better part of 50 years. We went to high school together. We graduated in 1974 from Lufkin High School. And then we played sports together at Lufkin and, well, and in college. Now, back then, we were skinny as a rail, and we probably had the two biggest afros in all of southeast and east Texas. Now, I want you to think about that and look at us right now. I've got very little hair left. Kenneth hadn't got any. I've put on about 60 pounds since then, and we're not going to get into Kenneth then on that. We won't go that far. But we go for long ways, and you can sit down if you want to. But, you know, it's, we've grown up together, and we have stayed friends all these years, and it's been weird how God's allowed our paths to stay crossed. But I'll say this, when I first think of Kenneth, and this is what you're going to be getting, is a man of integrity. And he is a winner. I'm going to tell you that. He's been successful in almost everything that he's done. He was a good student in school, great athlete, believe it or not. But he also, you know, in my profession as a coach, we overlapped. He was a referee, and I was a coach. Great referee, even got to ref in the state tournament, which is awesome in our book. He and Cynthia have been married 42 years, is that right? All right? And he's been a wonderful husband, a wonderful dad. And he's done a really good job in city governments. I've, like I said, we've stayed together all these years. And it's kind of ironic, when I retired the first time, moved to central Texas to be by grandkids, and we moved to Buta, Texas, believe it or not, and guess who lived right down the street from us? All right? And he was, he was a, people in Buta greatly respected him and loved him. As a matter of fact, I got, he got me to serve on the first-ever Buta Bond Committee. And we, Buta was the fastest-growing town in the state of Texas then. Do y'all know where Buta is? I know you do now, if you've talked to him, probably. All right? And unfortunately, they didn't plan it that way. The infrastructure was nowhere near what it should be. So he had his hands full, but he's done a tremendous job, and like, he worked there for 14 years, and I guess after 14 years, you can call anything Buta after a while, right? So, but he's done a tremendous job. And I'd like to close out on one thing, and this is going to sound a little bit morbid. But I've, I've met some wonderful people in my life. I've taught thousands of students, and I'm still teaching at Coons High School right now. And I've worked with hundreds of wonderful people. But I told Kenneth one time, and we kind of had this little pact, that if I passed before he did, he's going to be a pallbearer in my funeral. And for me, that's, integrity is very big, and honor, and it would be an honor to me. Even, you can, you know, you can only have a handful of those, and he would certainly be one for me. And I just want you to know I love you, brother. And if you give him a chance, you'll love him, too. And thank you for giving him this opportunity, and thank you for letting me be up here in front of you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Well, Bob and Thomas, I'll pay you later for those kinds. Thank you. Just a few things before I sit down, a couple more comments. I pledge to the city council and the people of Beaumont to bring passion to the job, dedication to the city, loyalty to this community, integrity to the position, trust within the organization, and forming the best city in the country. But I cannot do it alone. It's going to take all of us in this room and everyone in this region working together to make us the best. I ask for council to provide the policy and guidance, and allow me as a city manager to provide the execution of staff resources, excuse me, to achieve those goals. I also want staff to know that they are the key, so we are here for you. Some of the goals I want to emphasize among the others you've heard. One, emphasize excellent customer service and drive an organizational efficiency, effectiveness, and response to customer requests while being proactive internally as well as externally. Two, economic development. Valuable cities have to be competitive if they are to drive economically, thrive economically. We must recruit, create new business while retaining and taking care of existing business and partnerships. Three, strategic planning. Not having a current plan is having no plan at all. We will work with key stakeholders, council and staff, to establish solid plans throughout the city. And four, emphasize a safe community, with each person having an excellent quality of life. My first days will be spent listening to you, asking questions, hearing priorities and identification. This week will be done by contacting everyone possible in the community. I look forward to meeting each person and group with an open door to the public. We must work as a unit, communicate, and achieve in a positive environment. In closing, I remind you of the movie Hidden Figures, the movie about NASA and their quest to put a space person in orbit. The mathematician in the 1961 story Catherine Johnson successfully computed the landing coordinates for the John Glenn in his successful Friendship 7 flight better than the IBM computer. After the flight, Mission Commander Harrison asked Catherine if we could now go to the moon. Catherine's answer was, "We are already there." So for those who ask, "Beaumont, can we go to the moon?", my answer is, "We are already there." God bless, and let's go forward and achieve.
Okay, Mr. Williams, let me catch my breath. Thank you for that. And we are already on the moon. Also, I want to make a comment to the hair situation. My pastor always say, "It just left." I would like for all of the department heads that are in the audience to please stand. Directors and department heads, please stand. And of course, you hear us talk about Angie. If you call down here, you're going to get Angie. Everybody should have an Angie, and Angie is to the back of the room. Angie, wave your hand. Angie is my assistant and also the assistant to the city manager. And of course, we have our new chamber president that's also in the audience. Will you please stand? Thank you. And I also want to recognize former council member Bobby Patterson. I started Ward Four, Bobby Patterson, former council member. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move this meeting ahead. So now's the time for any citizen who would wish to speak on consent agenda item number one. If you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk to the front of the room, and she will call your name for you to come up to the podium to speak. Green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. The red light will come on at the end of your three minutes.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call for a motion for the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Interim for item number D. I noticed that the price was $189,000 with the bid from Vider and $349,316 with the bid from Fort Worth. What do we estimate the scope of work to be in? You know, why did it come in, in your opinion, as a discrepancy in the number such a big amount? Did we have an estimation of what the cost would be?
Keith Folsom's our facility director who's over this. Keith, do you have any information on this one?
Yeah, we were, we were expecting it to be around the 150, 160 range. So, you know, I can't explain why somebody bids, you know, 300,000 versus that. We feel confident, and Marsh for approving has done numerous jobs for us in the past, so I feel confident with his price and the work that will be performed.
Okay, thank you. That's all I was looking for. Mayor.
Councilmember Durio.
On item G, I guess about the tasers, I have a couple of questions. One of them, I see we're just getting this approved today, but it has an estimated delivery date of August the 1st. So I'm trying to figure out why are we approving something that's already been delivered? On page three.
Yeah, I believe that's the estimated delivery date, but we won't, we won't be able to essentially purchase them and invoice until it's approved by council.
I think that was based on the invoice when they originally did the bid, but that was if they ordered it at that time, so it hasn't necessarily been.
We haven't taken delivery, that's right.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carrying. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the work session? Thank you.
Mayor and council, so what we have today is a presentation workshop on the FY23 budget. You should have received a copy of the proposed budget. And just so everyone, everyone knows, we'll have a work session to discuss the proposed budget today. We'll have a work session next week to discuss in detail the capital plan. And let's see. And we'll go ahead and note that I believe we've hit a milestone in our city budgeting. We have, we have crossed the $300 million mark in our budget for the first time. And what you have before you, in slide one, is essentially the source of revenues for the city's general fund. And you'll see a breakdown there in the pie chart where the largest source of our revenues are property taxes and sales taxes, with the third, the third highest amount in the industrial payments. And so here you'll see, if you look across, for example, the FY22 budget, which we're in now, the second column compared to the FY23 budget, which is our proposed budget, you'll see increases in property taxes. And later in this meeting, we'll ask you to set a proposed rate which relates to that property tax. So we'll talk a little bit about that more in the, in the, in the coming slides. But it's important to keep in mind that, of course, the property tax values are tied to appraisal values, which this, this year are up, which is good. You'll also look at the second line item, sales and use taxes, in the second column compared to the fourth, which again, you'll see those are increased, which again, is up. We attribute that increase to a couple things. One is, of course, inflation affects this number, which is good in that we get higher revenue. The bad news is, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute, it affects everything we do, just like at our house, at home, inflation is kind of affecting us all. So this is on the revenue side, which helps, but we'll also have to talk about how it's affecting us in the expense side. The other line item I'd like to point out is if you look down in your governmental revenues, you'll see in FY22, the second column, $3 million injection there, and then 22 proposed to be $7 million. Now, those are related to the COVID ARP funds. We'll talk about that a little bit more in the coming slide. So again, this is the revenue side of the proposed budget. And this slide is, essentially, you'll see the years, of course, listed along with the proposed tax rate. Now, in the proposed budget today, what we'll ask you to vote on again on item one on the agenda is the proposed tax rate, which is .685 cents per $100 evaluation. Now, that compares to the FY22 rate, which you see there is .705. So again, what we're asking is to, or what we're proposing in our budget is a reduction of the rate, but we just have to keep in mind that there's also the increase in appraise values. And we'll go ahead and point out that of that proposed .685 cent rate per $100 evaluation, .50457 will go for operating, and then, of course, we carve out .18043 to debt service to pay for capital expenditures. So we just talked about the revenue side of the proposed budget. This would be the expenditure side of the proposed budget. And here you'll see, if you look, I guess at the bottom of the chart with the total expenditures, you'll see, if you're looking at the second column, that's the FY22 compared to the final fourth column, which is proposed FY23. So you'll see there's obviously an increase in what we're proposing to spend. Again, a lot of these increases are going to be attributable, attributable to a couple things. One is cost of living increases for both, both police, fire, and civilians, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a second. And then also, of course, as I mentioned, inflationary pressures. We use a lot of fuel in our vehicles. We have a lot of vehicles, and of course, all of our materials are increasing due to inflationary pressures. One other line I'll mention is if you look at the transfers out to other funds, it's that last line item, you'll see a pretty, pretty large number there, $18,476,600 in FY22. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a second as well, but it's important to point out in this expenditure slide because what we're doing there is using a surplus of funding in order to shore up a variety of funds this year so that we will have, in our opinion, a smoother 23. You may recall back in the, the retreat we had out at the, at the Terrell Park Nature Center, where we talked about budget challenges that we were facing in the upcoming year. We feel like this, this transfer here, which again, we'll talk a little bit more about in a second, will help to address some of those challenges. And this slide here, again, is just a summary of the revenue and expenditures. Again, you'll see listed here the, the transfers of 18.4 million to shore up those funds. The other important thing to show here is the final line, which is the ending fund balance. You see, going back to, say, 2021, we were at 47 million in ending fund balance, and you'll see proposed for 23 would be 42 million in ending fund balance. If you look at the excess revenues over appropriation, kind of the middle line there, you'll see basically where we're proposing to dip into our fund balance by 1.2 million dollars. Question may come up is, you know, what is considered a healthy fund balance? Typically, you want to have 20% of your operating expenses, which is roughly $30 million, but I think we've learned over the last decade or so with COVID and our many, many storms that it's important to have a healthy fund balance because even though we may expect some reimbursements from the federal government, FEMA, et cetera, sometimes it takes a long time to get those funds recovered, and sometimes they don't come at all. So just wanted to point that out. This next slide is... This next slide is in reference to the transfers that I mentioned a couple of times earlier, that eighteen point four million dollars. You see, the first line item is pretty, we, we addressed that a couple of months ago, more of a bookkeeping issue. The next line item you see is transit fund. Normal year, we might, we might have to help shore up the transit system by two to three million dollars. This year, four point seven. Again, we've had a lot of inflation pressure against our fuel. We've had to add some, some staff due to the, some findings by the FTA in recent review to try to improve our maintenance. And so we're having to recommend transferring that amount. The next line item here, you'll see capital reserve transfer of four point five million. Normally, we may, this may be a two to three million dollar allocation, but in this case, we're proposing to use some COVID ARP funds, rescue plan funds. For a couple of key, key capital reserve expenditures that I'll go ahead and point out, approximately two million dollars for police department body cam system. The library chiller needs some work here at the main library downtown. And again, we're proposing to use some ARP funds for three fire trucks and five ambulances across the next two fiscal years. If you go down to the next line, you'll see trying to shore up our Laura fund. The next line item, you'll see general liability. Again, if you look at the budget, you'll see those funds starting to dip. And so we've got to shore them up. You may be aware of a two million dollar expense we've got related to some obligations with Jefferson County for a treatment center. And so that includes, two million dollars is included in that number. Then the next you have is the general improvement fund, one point four six million. I would say over the last five or six months, we've gotten, the administration's gotten a lot of requests for different park and quality of life amenities. And so this is related to a new proposed, I would say amended capital program item, which again, we can discuss more in detail next week, of trying to basically allocate additional funds for quality of life amenities that are at our park system. And then finally, the last, the last line item is employee benefits. And again, if you, we'll talk about this a little bit more at a later slide. But again, if you, you'll see that essentially the fund needs to be shore up. And so these transfers will, will help to do that. I mentioned the, the COVID American Rescue Plan allocations. You may recall, we discussed this at our retreat at Terrell Park. And here you can see kind of how we have allocated the first tranche of money back about a year ago, a little bit more than a year ago now, sixteen point five million. You can see there in the list where we use some of it to help our general fund recover. You can see also a, a lot of the initial funds were going to water and sewer. Some of that going to, well, the good thing about that is the more we were able to use ARP funding for water and sewer, the less bond money we have to borrow, which again, helps us try to avoid a higher water and sewer rate increase, which we'll talk about in a minute. Then you'll see the, the second tranche of ARP money. And here again, you'll see we're proposing to allocate seven million dollars to the general fund, three million dollars to shore up the COVID nineteen fund. As you know, during the height of COVID, we, we were expending a lot of funds and we were attributing them all to COVID with the hope that we would be able to recover those. But there are concerns that with everybody else in the country going to FEMA for, for recovery, we feel like we need to go ahead and, and shore up that fund. You'll see there two point five four, or again, sewer rehab again helps with our, our water and sewer system. And then you see there the final two line items with the fire trucks and the ambulances for the next, the next two years. Proposed in the FY twenty-three budget, you can see here adding positions and removing positions. Our department directors and their managers do a great job of constantly analyzing our operations to try to determine, you know, where we need to add assets and perhaps where we can, can do without. So this is our proposed changes for FY twenty-three, which does take us to a proposed authorized employee level of one thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine employees. Again, as we want to try to provide the, the best service we can to our citizens, we want to both attract and retain the best that we can. And as we know, inflation is affecting us all. I think it's been the highest we've seen in four decades. I think depending upon the month, it's, it's hitting about eight percent. And so we are recommending a three percent increase for civilians. Per the agreement with fire, in their final year of the agreement, three percent. And then we're proposed budget for police in the first year of their next agreement would be four percent. So that's what we're proposing, understanding that that agreement is still in negotiation. So the next slide is focusing on water and sewer fund. I think it's important for us to remember that Beaumont is more than a hundred and eighty years old. And thankfully, most of our infrastructure is not that old, but we have a lot of it. So we have approximately eight hundred and sixty-five miles of water lines, mains, seven hundred and sixty miles of sewer lines. We have forty-five thousand water meters. We have ten thousand, nine hundred manholes. We, of course, have water plant, treatment plant, and water towers. It all has to be maintained. I think it's important to, you know, keep in mind that our water and sewer budget, our system is an enterprise system, so it's self-sustaining. And so it, it, the rates that we charge for the system are what are, what are needed to, to essentially keep it operating like it should. And again, we'll be talking specifically next week about the capital improvements proposed for the water and sewer system. But I think it's important, as you look across the water and sewer table, you'll see debt service there. Close to the bottom of the list of expenditures is at seventeen point oh three two million. And again, that, that service payment goes to, of course, bonds, which are used to fund the system. If you look down at the excess revenues over expenditures, you'll see going back to twenty twenty-one, we, you know, well, looking at this year, let's just say we're, we're about one point eight million to the negative in terms of revenues over expenditures. Going down to the next line, you'll see beginning fund balance versus ending fund balance. So here, it's probably good to look back at twenty twenty-one, where you see we had an ending fund balance of twelve point seven million. And then proposed here, you know, with a proposed rate increase, which we'll talk about in a second, is eight point six million dollars. And it's important to look at that number because you, we need a minimum fund balance in this category of fifteen percent. And so this is just above that at approximately sixteen percent. The thing is, not only should we keep fifteen percent for operating in case things happen, y'all do recall, we had the, the ice storm and, and that affects, you know, affected our water service. The other thing is if we fall below the fifteen percent fund balance, when we go out to issue water revenue bonds, that affects our rates. So essentially, we will be paying more for the money that we borrow in order to maintain the system. So in order to do that, we are proposing in the FY twenty-three budget, an eight percent increase to water and sewer rates. Again, the idea is to keep that fund balance above the mandatory fifteen percent. And this would generate an estimated three point seven million dollars in revenue. This slide gives you a history of the rate increases over the years. And I think it's probably important to point out, twenty sixteen, there was no rate increase. Eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one, there was no rate increase. So, well, you don't want to raise rates just to raise rates. You know, when you don't, sometimes it might catch up with you. And so, you know, again, I think this is one of those years where we need to, we need to look at raising rates. Jumping over to the solid waste fund, again, this is a enterprise fund, which is, means it's self-sufficient based on rates charged. Again, affected by inflationary pressures, fuel prices, et cetera. So here again, you can see where the end, ending fund balance back in twenty-one, two point three. Where we're proposing to be now is two point five. But this is with a proposed rate increase. And the proposed rate increase is one point five dollars. So it would adjust the rate from twenty dollars and seventy-five cents to twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Again, as mentioned, the last increase was in FY twenty-two. This would generate an estimated six hundred and fifty-seven dollar, thousand dollars, rather. And again, the idea is to get that fund balance up above fifteen percent. And again, here's a history of the rate increases over the last many years. Again, we did not have an increase in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, or two thousand twenty-one. And as a comparison to other cities, here you can see where the garbage rates would definitely put us on the higher side compared to some other cities. The, based on an average six thousand gallon billing, it would put us roughly in the middle with the proposed rates. This next slide talks, refers to the benefits fund. You can see here where the excess revenues over expenditures were estimated to be quite higher than normal. We feel like a lot of this has to do, and again, we're just, we don't know for sure, but we, we attribute this to a lot of elective surgeries or medical procedures that maybe weren't during, done during COVID, that maybe a lot of these are being done now. And so again, the idea here is to transfer some monies in to shore up this fund. However, as part of this, again, in order to, to shore up the fund, we are unfortunately going to have to ask our employees to help, help us with that effort. And so in addition to the monies we're, we're transferring in, you know, we're looking at an increase in medical contribution, ten percent, dental, three percent. The co-pay would increase by ten dollars. Deductibles would increase by two fifty. And then the co-pay would increase by two fifty. And again, even with that, even with the transfers in, you can see that, that the fund balance in that fund is still, it's acceptable, but it's lower than we'd like it to be. And with that, that is my final slide. And I would like to, you know, really just take a moment to thank, in preparation to budget, I would just like to thank Todd Semino, our CFO, Cheryl Ray, our controller, Stephanie Hardy, our budget officer, and Victoria Sledge, our fiscal officer, for all of their many, 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 many hours of hard work in putting this proposed budget together. But with that, I would open it up to questions. We do have, of course, Todd and the, the budget staff, finance staff is here. We also have department directors for most of our departments here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Okay, don't y'all all jump at once? Okay, Councilmember Turner, Councilmember Phil Scher, Councilmember Neil Nix.
Prior to doing the budget hearing, I expressed my concern with our minimums. And I understand we're doing three percent across the board, but we have minimums. We have laborers making eleven dollars and fifty cent. So just so people understand, it's three percent to someone making eleven dollars and fifty cent. Can you kind of let us know what the breakdown of that would be in dollars and cents?
Yes, sir. So we did look at, we did look at the number of employees who earn the lowest pay amount. And we do have approximately, well, we have twenty-six in the lowest. And essentially, we, we've talked about it and we feel like we do need to review it to see if we can increase it from perhaps eleven to twelve, something a bit higher than the minimum. And I think we will do that through the year. I will say that, you know, sometimes we talk about, you know, you see Chick-fil-A or Buc-Ee's and these, and certainly we're, we're competing with those folks. I do think it's important to keep in mind, though, that when you add the benefits that the city of Beaumont offers, that that's also important to keep in mind as well. But having said that, we do have a breakdown of how many folks are earning, you know, less than, we've got some in the fourteen, thirteen, twelve, and eleven dollar range. And so we are looking at, you know, trying to bump that up to a minimum. So again, we can, we can stay, first of all, pay them for the hard work that they're doing, but also stay competitive.
And just a follow-up. Sorry, Matt. Just a follow-up. I, I've asked for two weeks a salary study to show a comparison of where we are compared to other cities our size. I don't a hundred percent comfortable feel, I don't feel comfortable voting without knowing the data to prove that we are competitive to cities our size. I think it's important and essential that we have this information prior to making these decisions, specifically cities that are our size and bigger.
Yeah, and again, I think Chris Catalina is here, but may could speak better to that. But we do have twenty-six employees making eleven dollars, nine earning twelve, thirty-four employees earning thirteen, twenty-seven earning fourteen. I know we, I think Chris, I don't know if Chris is here. Oh, there he is. I know he, there are some other cities in our area. I think Baytown had an eleven dollar per hour. But we had some other cities that were higher than that. And so again, the idea is to look at those, to see what makes sense based on that. I think, Chris, when you contacted them, a lot of the work was being done by contractors and temps, whereas, but if they were full-time employees, it was a higher, it was higher than what we were paying.
Yeah, example, like, I know Waco does nothing lower than fifteen dollars an hour. So I mean, I just wanted to make sure we're just really competitive to cities our size prior to making a decision. You know, especially when we're talking about dropping rates. And I want to make sure prior to doing that, we want to make sure we're paying competitive wages. I would feel much more comfortable knowing that prior to voting on dropping the rate.
Before I call on you, Councilmember Phil Scher, I just want to piggyback off of what Councilmember Turner has said. In order for us to maintain quality employees that will stay with us and we don't have the major turnover, we're gonna have to be competitive. When Chick-fil-A and. When Chick-fil-A and Buc-Ee's can pay fifteen and nineteen dollars an hour, some way, somehow, we're gonna have to look at this budget, go through it, and raise the minimum so that we can be competitive and we don't have that revolving door. Even if we have to take a look at some of the part-timers and see what we could do, you know, with some of the part-timers are combining some of the job duties so that we can bring this minimum wage up to at least fifteen dollars an hour.
And I think to your point, we, what I'm hearing is we don't have a lot of turnover, but that said, with the inflation, you know, again, I agree, we need to look at it to make sure we don't lose, lose folks.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember Neal, then Councilmember Gitts.
Same concern, especially with those having to work outside. But just for the sake of our citizens, just again, remind everybody that budgeting a deficit is common practice for us, although undesirable, is something that we do. And again, I, sometimes I think we get confused between county, city, and appraisal district. Again, just remind everyone, we're not the ones who raise their property tax. So as far as the value of their home, I apologize. We didn't raise the value of their home, and that's going to impact their property tax directly. But that was some, something the city did. We did not raise the, the value of their homes.
That was county.
Appraisal district, yes.
Correct. And to repeat that, the city does not set appraisals. There's a separate body, elected body, that, appointed body that does that.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Semino, we have only gone up twenty-seven, or two-point-seven million dollars in taxes for, for property taxes last year versus this year?
That's correct, and that's by lowering the rate two cents. Because, you know, the appraised values have increased.
Okay, do you know what the value is on the new properties put on the roll? I know it's seven-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand for tax revenue.
What's the question?
The value of the new properties put on the tax roll?
So the overall value is nine-point-four-seven billion. And last year, it was eight-point-eight billion. So that's a seven-point-four-six percent increase in the appraised values.
Okay. All right, my next question's on the water and sewer rates. I probably have more heartburn over that increase than I do on the rest of it. So we dig in a little deeper. What can we do to dig into this a little deeper to figure out where we can cut, rather than just assume we could pass an increase on to the consumer? I mean, you go back and look over the last several years, we passed an increase on. And sooner or later, if you start looking at this thing from a business standpoint, sometimes you gotta make cuts that lots of people aren't willing to make, but sometimes you gotta make them rather than just keep passing it on. I don't know about y'all's water bill at y'all's house, but mine's already plenty high enough. And to just continue to add on an extra eight percent on that, and add on more money every month for the trash pickup, which I think both of those departments are doing a great job. But I think we need to take a deeper look into it.
If we could, before we talk about cuts, just for the general public, you know, we talk about record inflation in four decades, and we talk about the eight to nine percent. That's an index, so that, that includes all kinds of items. This council has approved contracts this year for chemicals that are in excess of a hundred percent increase. So, yeah, we do talk about record inflation at eight to nine percent, but in actuality, for the water and sewer fund, it's a lot higher because we can't do anything with our water without chemicals. And if our chemical cost is increasing, if it's doubling in cost, that's, that's a hard cost to curb through cuts alone.
And I'm not saying that we can, I'm not saying that we could proceed without having some type of increase. All I'm saying is, is that we owe it to the citizens to take a, take a deep look into it and see if there's something that we're missing that we could possibly take advantage of.
It's something we've done in the past. You know, the things that we look at, especially in the general fund, the general fund is seventy-eight percent payroll. So a good tool in the, in the general fund is to hold positions as they become vacant. You know, we hold them for a while before we fill them. But in the water and sewer fund, only twenty-three percent of the expenses are payroll-related. So while we can still look at holding some positions as they become vacant, at some point, it affects the service that we offer because it's only twenty-three percent of those costs. We don't really have a lot of fluff. I don't think we have any fluff built into the water fund or the solid waste fund. It's, it's usually bare minimal. We do like to have good equipment. We do buy new, uh, new equipment. But we've all learned through COVID, if a part breaks, the whole truck doesn't work. We've seen that in Port Arthur where they couldn't pick up their trash. So we, we do, we do buy good fleet equipment, but I would not recommend, you know, cutting in that area for sure.
And I appreciate that. One other thing that I thought was a good number to throw out there for everybody, just so we have a better perspective on it, is between fire and police on our, in our general fund, it's fifty-eight-point-eight percent of the overall budget. So I think that's an important number just for everybody to know.
Councilmember Gitts.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Turner, over lunch, paid me a compliment. He said that, you know, Mike, when you identify problems, one of the things I like about you is you try to propose solutions too. And, you know, piggybacking on what Councilman Neal was just saying about the water department, I do think that there are some things we can look at. I've talked about them before. I don't know how much of an impact it would make, but elimination of fluoride in our water supply, like a lot of cities have done, not only saves you the cost of purchasing those chemicals, but the caustic nature of fluoride denigrates our water lines and has cost us in the past much money in expensive repairs. Fluoride, and I'm not going to get into this too deep, but fluoride was originally proposed to be put in municipal water systems in the fifties because it was identified that lack of fluoride could cause cavities. Now, and at that time, you didn't have toothpaste with fluoride added. You didn't have mouthwash with fluoride added. Now you do. So you, you don't have to get your fluoride from the water. You can get it from toothpaste, you can get it from mouthwash. And then, there's a whole nother body of thought that thinks fluoride is harmful to your body. And I'm not going to get into that debate right now either. But suffice it to say, there's many, many, many schools of thought that fluoride is actually a chemical that you ingest and causes harm to your body. So I would like for you to identify how much we could save by eliminating fluoride from our water supply. That would be one thing. Because like Councilmember Neal said, my, my water bill now is, it's, it's really high. And people on fixed incomes, to have to deal with that, much of an increase is asking quite a bit. So that's, that's one point on the water department. On the minimum wage for employees, yes, I agree, we need to do everything that we can to bring those numbers up. But one thing I think gets overlooked when you compare it to other cities throughout Texas is what is our cost of living here versus the cost of living in those cities? Because our purchasing power in Beaumont can go a lot further than it can in Buda. And you can ask Mr. Williams about his home search and, you know, what he's, what he's looking at and how much he thinks his home might sell for in Beaumont and some of the homes he's looking for. And, you know, what, what I'm saying is, we, we have a good cost of living in Beaumont compared to Austin and some of its surrounding communities. So when we're making that comparison between cities as to cost of living, let's try to also factor in, if there's a way to do so, what the purchasing power is. You know, so that if you're making twelve dollars in Beaumont, you know, can you purchase a little bit more and a little bit better than you can if you're only making twelve dollars in Austin? The last thing I wanted to mention today is you're asking us to set a tax rate, I think today, of sixty-eight and a half, is that right, Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so here's the problem I have with that. Once we set the rate, we can go down, but we can't go up, is that right?
The proposed rate, yes.
The proposed rate. Once we set the, that's what you're asking us to do, is to set the proposed rate today?
Yes, sir.
So once we set the proposed rate, we can go down, but we can't go up. Now, we haven't even had a workshop on the capital plan. That's not till next week. What if, after looking at that, what if, after looking at some of these other things that we've identified in terms of raising the minimum wage, we want to go up a little bit? Or we need more revenue? Well, we can't go up because we've already set the proposed rate. I'm such, and I, I do want to lower our tax rate, and I, I would not vote to leave it the same. I do want to lower our tax rate. But I'm urging us to look at it carefully if we want to lower it all the way today to sixty-eight and a half. Because we can bring it back down to sixty-eight and a half after we've got this budget analyzed a little bit further. We can do it, but we can't go up if we need it. So I'm gonna suggest today that maybe we want to consider, instead of sixty-eight and a half, sixty-nine and a half. It gives us a little bit of room, not much, but a little bit, to look at some of these things. And we can go down, but we can't go up. So that's just something to think about.
Mayor, can I explain to the public why we can't go up after they take the vote?
Absolutely.
So, just in case someone out there is listening that knows about this, technically, we could go up, but in order to do that, we, so you're gonna take a vote today on the proposed tax rate. We have to file a notice in the newspaper, and we have all kinds of statutory requirements to follow with this notice. If the council was to consider a tax rate above what we're putting into the, into the notice to the public, that would require me to post another notice. And with the time constraints before the end of the year, we wouldn't have the time necessary to meet those notice requirements. So technically, you can do it. We just don't have time in the budget year to do that through, because of the notice requirements.
Right. And, and I didn't want to get into all of that, but yes, I mean, yeah, technically, we could do it, but practically, we can't. So it's pretty much the same thing.
Councilmember Doria.
On the minimum wage for, for fifteen dollars or, like I said, I was looking at the numbers. We have ninety-five employees that make less than fifteen dollars an hour. And what you said, Mike, about the cost of living, might be correct, Mike, but it still wouldn't be making us competitive with other employers in the area at fifteen dollars an hour. People might be able to get by on twelve or thirteen dollars an hour, but what kind of life are you having trying to support a family on twelve or thirteen dollars an hour? You know, working for the city of Beaumont? I just wanted to say that. And the other, I wanted to ask, I know this department head is here. I would like to hear from, I guess it would be Mr. Harris on the fluoride in the water deal. Is that, is that something that we could save money, or is that something that's not needed?
Kind of like what Mr. Gitts alluded to. We've researched it, and you can look up anything you want to on fluoride, whether it's safe, whether it's feasible, whether it's not feasible, whether it's unsafe. There's so many different opinions out there. For us to remove the fluoride out of the water, there's a lot involved with it. We have to notify TCQ that we're doing this. It's doable, it's a possibility, and it's definitely doable. The exact amount of how much the fluoride cost us each year, I don't have that number. Like I said, that's more than the production side. That would be more of a bar question, but I do know it is definitely doable.
Would the savings be enough for us not to have to increase our water rates?
To that, I'm not sure of. But like I said, it would definitely be something worth looking into to see what, what the savings would be.
But we can get you, we can get you an estimate by next week.
All right.
Councilmember Gitts, then Councilmember Turner.
Yeah, Mike, I remember, and you helped me, helped me remember with more detail. There was an instance where fluoride at the injection site had caused tremendous damage, corrosion.
Fluoride is very corrosive. It caused a lot of corrosion at the injection site. It had to be rigworked.
Any, do you recall ballpark what that cost?
I do not.
Okay, was it, was it less than a million or more than a million?
I believe it was less than a million. But it was still, it was pretty costly.
And so, to my point, and again, many different opinions on it, and that's why I've asked for more information to be provided. That corrosion that it does on those metal pipes, some people say, that's not doing your body any favors either. So I, I'm, I'm just saying, there's a lot of schools of thought on that. You can get on the internet, and you can go down a lot of rabbit trails and see, you know, some people think this way. I know the American Dental Society, they think, rah rah fluoride, you know, saves, you know, and, yeah. The last time we had a debate on this, we had a dentist on council, and, you know, he was big on keeping fluoride in.
Sure.
So I, I would like to have information to make an informed decision. And could you check on how much it costs to do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Hey, Mr. Mike, thank you for coming up here. And I think it's pretty essential that, you know, fire, police, you know, we getting mugged in the parking lot, of course, we want the fire, I mean, the police department to come out and address that.
Yes.
Fire departments, a fire at a house, of course, we want them to kind of address that. But it's an issue that we have in Beaumont that I actually, is to talk about the elephant in the room. We do have brown water issues from time to time.
Yes, sir.
And your laborers, what are your laborers making?
My laborers start at eleven-fifty an hour.
Okay, and your laborers are the ones that are actually in the hole, in the trenches, dealing with the busted pipes, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Right? And I just want to stress it, you know, here today, that, that is just as essential as some of the other things that we want dealing with fire and police. So when we say this minimum wage, we keep stressing it, these are the same people who are dealing with public safety with the water we drink, the baths we give our children in and ourselves in.
Correct.
So I want us to really be more considerate when we talk about this minimum wage and the cost of living because these guys are just as essential. And I want to make that point because I know some of the issues that we do have in Beaumont, and I do see those guys down in the manhole doing some of the things that they're doing. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I would like to say that these guys, they work very hard. They're out there every day, rather like two, three weeks ago when it's a hundred, two, hundred and three degrees. Like I said, they, they don't stop, so.
And they do a great job.
Yes, ma'am, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to ask Mr. Benji Thomas if he would come forward.
Benji Williams?
I mean, Benji Williams, I said Benji Thomas, I'm sorry, Benji. Mr. Benji Williams to come forward. And can you explain to the public some of the things that your department do that's not done anywhere in the state of Texas?
Well, councilmembers, Mayor.
Thank you.
My department, actually, we picks up your garbage, we do your heavy trash, we give compost out. We operate a landfill, one of the best landfills in the state of Texas. My guys work from seven o'clock in the morning until they complete their assignment. That means if it's eight o'clock at night, nine o'clock at night, my guys gonna work until they complete your assignment for their day. Although in COVID, we did not miss one day of your garbage not being picked up. One day, your heavy trash didn't get picked up, and our landfill was open. So, as you can see, we, we offer once a week heavy trash pickup. No city that I know of offer once a week heavy trash pickup. Most cities, twice a month, I mean, I'm sorry, once every two months, once a year, or not at all. We pick up tires from your residents. All surrounding cities around here do not pick up tires from your residents. We do a lot of, if you call in and say, I didn't have my garbage out, we don't fuss about it. We come back and pick it up. So we go the extreme mile, what my guys do. We are a friendly operation. We try to assist our customers the best we can. But got any questions, I'd gladly answer them for you.
And one thing I want to say that I was really in- And one thing I want to say that I was really impressed with, I saw the guys one day. They actually, not only do they go get off the truck and pull the garbage cans to the street after they dump it for senior citizens, they will push it back off the street, and so I applaud that.
Yes, we have our special assistant for handicap, disabled. My guys will go to the house, pick it up, and take it back.
Absolutely. Councilmember Getz, then Councilmember Durya.
Mr. Williams, I want to compliment you and your department. I have also seen incredible dedication from your employees, and they, they not only pick it up, but they clean it up. You know, they'll rake it up. You have a bunch of trees that left a lot of leaves out there that be picked up. They'll rake them up and put them in the truck too. I, I've seen it with my own eyes. And you can put washing machines out there. You can put, you know, big stuff out there, big tree trunks. You pick it up, and I applaud you. I don't know of any other city around here that does that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Durya.
I just want to piggyback on that. I've contacted Mr. Williams about tires. Long Trail Park Road, they have tires all down the road, all the way out to the hill to Brant Bayou. And I made a phone call, and within an hour, they were all picked up. But also, I want to ask, your, the guys that drive, the people that drive, your employees that drive the trucks, are they, do they have commercial driver's license?
Yes. Everybody that drives on the collection side have at least a class B CDL. Most of my guys have class A CDL license.
And what are their start, what is their starting pay?
Starting pay is nineteen dollars an hour.
And is that a competitive rate, would you think?
Not in the market today. No, it is not. But my guys, if you work for Solid Waste, you really, you're not going to make the twenty-three, the twenty-four, twenty-five dollars an hour, even though they deserve it. The base pay, if you look around, is probably around twenty-three, twenty-four dollars an hour, but my guys start at nineteen.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Just to piggyback it, you can Google it, because I did prior to coming here, what normal CDL drivers make in the state of Texas is actually at twenty-seven, the average minimum. So, I want to let you know, there's been times that I emailed about a citizen didn't have a trash can, and within thirty minutes, it was at their residence. So, Mr. Benji, I appreciate you. I really do. And I wish this is the kind of energy we just spread throughout our entire city, not just the city of Beaumont, just other employers as well, man. I love your energy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Turner, one of the things I was looking at, on page two forty-one is the compensation plan. And I guess a couple of the questions I have, because it gives a pretty, pretty good range on each one of these categories. Who has the authority to pick the salary for each individual position, Chris?
Mr. Williams, I think you take your seat. We're down with you.
So, you know, we do a couple of things throughout the year on a regular basis. Again, as I mentioned before, we're always, always reviewing.
Two forty-one.
Two forty-one. Always reviewing, you know, our, our pay in order to stay, stay competitive. And so, HR, we'll do that on an individual department basis. HR will also do it. Sometimes at our request, we'll say, hey, can you do a salary survey of, you know, perhaps, you know, CDL? And so, they may look at maybe other pub, other solid waste departments in the region. They may look at other industries that, that may require a class B CDL license. And so, they're constantly doing that. And so, to answer your question, I mean, generally, a pay adjustment may come from a department head through HR, and then up to the city manager, and the manager makes a recommendation.
Okay.
Or decision, rather.
Because back to what Councilmember Turner is talking about, and I understand what he's saying, and I agree with him for certain type positions. However, you got to be careful saying that you don't want any eleven dollar an hour salaries. I mean, I could think of several different situations. Summertime health, high school kids working in the summertime. So, there's always, there's always a need to have that minimum wage type class. But I appreciate what you're saying. One of the other things that you got to look into, though, this is just the base wage. There's lots of other perks for working for the city that are not included in this number here. TMRS match on, on retirements, pretty good discounted rates for health insurance. So, you got to look at the, at the whole picture too, whenever we finally get these, this spreadsheet that you're looking for.
Okay, well.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Getz.
And just to respond in fairness, I've been asking for two weeks for these salary studies that we're saying we're doing, and I have yet to see it. So, that's why I continue to ask. Once I see it, I will feel better about it, but the reality is, I have asked twice the week before last and the week before that to see a salary story, study prior to making the decision on the day, and I still have yet to receive the salary status we say we're doing.
Right. And one other thing, back to your point on that, so if you go to the skilled craft, all the S one, S two, S three, and S four, if you pick S one, for example, which is the lower end skilled craft, starts out at twelve eighty-eight an hour, but staff has authority up to twenty-four seventy-two for that one position. So, the money is already, the approval process from a council standpoint, best I can tell, is already done once this budget is approved. It's just a matter of what they do with that study that they, that they return.
And one more time, I'd just like to see a study to compare prior to me making this decision, because me being told it and me being, me actually seeing it are two different things.
I agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
And Councilman Turner, I, I agree, you know, we do need to have a, a study to see how our city employees' positions stack up against like-sized cities. I just wanted to be mindful of the cost of living as well. But it's pretty much a given that when you work in the governmental sector, you're not going to make as much as you do in the private sector. You just don't. You know, you can go work as an attorney in the district attorney's office, which is government job. You're never going to make as much money as an attorney in working for the DA's office as you can, your potential in the private sector. It's, it's really no different here, but there's a trade-off of things, like Councilmember Neil said. There's other benefits of working with the city that you don't necessarily always get in the private sector. So, we need to be mindful of those things too. Do I want to see everybody lifted up to the best extent that we can? Yes, and we need good data to do that. So, you know, I'm sure we'll be able to get that information so we can make those decisions.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya.
Just to respond to.
Mayor Pro Tim Durya, I'm sorry.
Just to respond to, Mayor, I mean, to Councilman Neil. I was, when you were talking about the, those eleven dollar salaries for different, I was talking about full-time city employees, you know, people that work here full-time. And one of the other benefits, as me, and I can speak from experience, being a city employee, is job security. You know, that's, that's one of the other benefits that you have, working for the city of Beaumont, is job security. But with, all this stuff, though, it's still, even what you were saying just now, Mike, it's about being competitive. Even though we, we can't maybe pay as much, we still want to try to be competitive to get quality folks and to, and to pay our quality folks that we already have fairly to make them want to, want to stay here and serve the citizens of Beaumont. Thank you.
Okay, and the reason I asked Benji Williams to come up, because one of the proposed increases is in his department. And so, I wanted the citizens to hear some of the things that are offered by Beaumont, by, by the department, because I know for a fact, as stated, it was in the news that Port Arthur went without having their trash picked up for several weeks because of the trucks breaking down. And so, you don't ever want to skimp on, on quality. And absolutely, quantity is, is very important, because we want to be able to maintain a level of service to our community. And so, you don't ever want to increase anything, but with, with everything, you know, it's like gas. No, nobody wanted to pay that four dollars and, I don't even know what it was, because I, I didn't even pay attention to it, because you had to have the gas. You filled it up, and you just cringed and filled your car up and kept going. But, you know, you did probably less running around, and you made every trip that you made count. It's just that across the nation, things are up, and we will try to minimize it as much as we can, because we too have a water bill, and I don't think any of us like paying a water light or gas. But the fact of the matter is that we all have it, and those are services that the city provide. We have to provide garbage and sewer and water, and we want to do it to the best of our ability. And of course, the cheapest route that we could make it possible for all citizens. Looking at the negative of one point eight nine five, we're going to have a negative deficit, correct, of one point eight nine five? Yes. And so, the proposed tax rate is at sixty-eight cents. And so, not to, in, not to leave it where it is, at the seventy cents? Seventy and a half. Mike, I'm agreeing with you. I think if we would do, I, I have it written down here when you said it, sixty-nine cents and a half, that would be a happy medium where we could possibly offset the water rates. It, it could help with the water? No.
No, ma'am, that's a different fund. So, the tax rate's just for the general fund. The rate increase in water and sewer is for the water fund, so the two are exclusive from each other.
What can we do to not raise the water to eight percent increase?
So, one of the reasons we're, we're needing to increase the rate, well, there's several. We have to meet our fifteen percent fund balance requirement. If we don't, we'll get a downgrade from Standards and Poor and Moody's, and interest expense will be passed on to our citizens.
Our bond ratings.
Right, our bond ratings will be downgraded. The second one is, we're needing to, about every eighteen to twenty-four months, we borrow money through issuing bonds for capital projects, and we need these infrastructure improvements to provide quality water and sewer. So, we're looking at issuing twenty-five million dollars of bonds in the next fiscal year. So, there's different ways you can finance that. The way I, the way I'm proposing is that we finance that over twenty years, and the payment would be one point nine million dollars a year. I only budgeted eight hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty-three, because we're probably going to issue mid-fiscal year. So, we, we won't be due the whole one point nine million that year. So, you could ask me, well, Todd, why didn't you pick thirty years and have the payment less? So, just for the, your information and the, and the public's information, if we financed twenty-five million over thirty years, the payment would go from one point nine million down to one point five million. So, it would save four hundred thousand dollars a year, but over the life of the bond, the citizens are going to end up paying an extra eight million dollars in interest. So, you don't want to mortgage your future away. So, if we can afford to do a twenty-year finance, then that's what we need to do.
Councilmember Getz.
You know, and again, to, to answer the question, another way, I think, Mayor, what can you do to avoid the eight percent water rate hike? Well, you either raise the rates, or you identify places where you can cut money. You can be less aggressive with some of your infrastructure projects. I don't know that we would want to do that. You can find other places to cut. I suggested looking at fluoride. They're going to get back with the numbers on that. That's not going to get us everywhere we need, but it might help a little bit. But, yeah, it, it's, it's tough, you know, so. I, like Councilmember Neil, I struggle with the idea of an eight percent water rate hike. I really do. So, if we could do anything to find some areas to cut and make it a little bit more palatable, you know, I'd really like to encourage us to do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Durya, Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
And, thank you, Mayor. How much that a eight percent increase on the water fund and the trash fund, in actual dollars per month per household, how much actual cash money are we speaking about?
So, if we increase the water rates by eight percent, for an average use of six thousand gallons for the residential customer, it raises their, their water bill five to six dollars a month. And for trash, it's a dollar fifty a month.
And that's six thousand gallons a month. Is that an average?
That's the average use.
Okay, all right.
Average use per household?
Correct.
Councilmember Turner.
At our current tax rate at seventy point five, with us going down to the proposed, what you guys are estimating, what would be like a rough estimate of the amount of money the city would no longer be getting in revenue if we actually went down to that rate?
If we went down to sixty-eight point five?
Yes, sir.
So, that's already built into the budget. That's going to increase property tax revenue by approximately two point six million because of the increase of appraised values.
If we kept it at, what is that, what would it do?
So, for every one cent, we raise about nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue. So, if you kept it up at seventy and a half cents, that'd be another one point eight million.
Okay.
Can I speak to that, Mayor?
Sure. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you. But by voting for a seventy point five percent tax rate, you're essentially voting for a tax increase to the citizens because of the property valuations that skyrocketed this year and last year, and probably next year.
Yeah, by a long shot, I want to know the dollar amount, not to say I wasn't in favor of it, but I just want to actually know the, the dollar amount to it.
My, my hope is, is that we could start out at point six eight five with the hopes of going down even lower than that.
We can't, though, because if we.
What's?
We can go down. We can go down.
You can go down all, all that you want. Yes, ma'am.
We can't go up.
Well, after the vote, you can't. That's correct.
Just one more. Those ninety-six guys or gals that make under fifteen dollars an hour, prior to making this, if those ninety-six employees did make fifteen dollars an hour, what would it do to us at a budgetary standpoint? What dollar amount are we looking at?
I can give you a few numbers. So, if we raised our minimum wage to twelve dollars an hour, it would cost the city thirty-five thousand. If we raised it to thirteen dollars an hour, it would cost a hundred and ten thousand. If we raised it to fourteen dollars an hour, it would cost two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And if we raise it to fifteen dollars an hour, it costs five hundred thousand. For a year, but be cautious if you're going to go to, if you're going to ask us to go to fifteen dollars in one year, because you're going to have all kinds of compression issues with the people that are already making fifteen-ten, fifteen-twenty an hour. They're not going to be happy that they're making the same wages, who, whatever the bottom position is at the city. I think if we go year by year and try to bump it up at maybe a dollar each year, it gives us time to work out the compression issues with the people that are getting paid more than them.
I think, Todd, in fairness, that's what we're saying. When you look at a salary study, you actually have a plan to make it more competitive. There's a lot more understanding versus saying it can't happen, and we're not explaining, or this is how we can get there with actual plan. I think that's more reasonable and understanding. So, appreciate that. That's what I was looking for.
Right, and I know Chris is working on that study. Sometimes you're, you're held hostage to the person trying to give you the information. So, we, we did get information on some cities, like the manager said. Other cities, we haven't had the reply yet, but I know Chris Catalina is working on that.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Durya.
Sixty-eight and a half cents, is the capital program monies for that included in that sixty-eight and a half cents?
Not sure I understand.
As far as funding those, the capital program?
Yes.
Okay, so if we, and I know myself, and I'm pretty sure everybody on council probably have some other projects that might not even be in this capital program right now. In order to cover that, with the sixty-nine and a half cents, would that be able to, what I'm saying is, go up a little bit to cover other projects that we might want to add into this capital project?
So, again, we'll have a workshop on that next week, but really, the main capital program we got going that's funded by general obligation. bond, bonds, is street rehab. And we still have plenty of street rehab money available. Now, we transferred some money over, 1.46 million dollars for some park improvements. We already have our money set for the riverfront, front park improvements. So everything that's in the design or construction phase right now is funded. If y'all want to add new projects, then we need to consider either issuing more bonds or, we typically don't do that through a property tax rate increase. We go issue bonds for those.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
What you just said is true, of course, Todd. But there could be some not real high-dollar items that could be funded straight out of the general fund. And we've seen things like resurfacing of basketball courts and, you know, low-hanging fruit, you know, things that improve our quality of life in our community. Doesn't cost a lot. In fact, some of them don't even have to go to council for authorization because they're less than $50,000. My thought is that by bumping it down, bumping it up from 68 and a half to 69 and a half, it gives you a $900,000 cushion, which after we have finished the budget process next week of looking at the capital plan and seeing what the wants and desires are of the various council members, we can then make a determination whether or not, well, that's already budgeted. We have the money for that. You don't need it to be 69 and a half. We can go ahead and lower it to 68 and a half, as you originally suggested. And I'm just trying to give us a little bit of flexibility. Similarly, for the salaries of the employees, you know, that would be a $900,000 cushion that would accommodate some of the wage rate increases that have been talked about today. So it just gives you a little bit more breathing room. And I'm not saying that I'm not trying to lower our tax rate because I want to lower our tax rate. I just think that it would be better to make that determination once we have all of the information in front of us instead of today. Because for practical reasons, as you said, we won't be able to go down later. But, yeah, I mean, we won't be able to go up later. But we can always go down.
I have a question for time restraints. Do we have to take a vote today? Or can't we?
Yes, we need, we probably should have done it last week, but we delayed it this week because we wanted y'all to have time to look at your budget before we came and took a vote.
Okay, Councilmember Samuel.
I've kind of sat back and listened to all the comments. From my experience, this is probably the most important part of the year. And these are some of the most important decisions we have to make at this time. Over the year, I've heard a lot of us talk about why we need to put more money into infrastructure, why we need to put money into parks. I've heard a lot of things that we want to do. But at the same time, we always talk about doing those things that will help make Beaumont a better place to live, work, and play. But no one wants to see increase in taxes. As we've gone through this previous year, we've seen inflation impact everything. Purchases as well as supplies. So this is what we are having to deal with now. So we not only are dealing with civilian employees, we're having to deal with police, and we're going to have to deal with fire. All of these things require attention. And they're all important to each one of us. I know that today's issue is dealing with fixing the tax rate. When we come back with our budget process, this is going to be a process that's going to be laboring up until October.
The new fiscal year is October 1st.
Yeah, so this is what we're going to be doing. We have, many of us have ideas where we want to put more money. But we can't forget about doing times such as the freeze or doing times like the hurricane when we're shut down. The city of Beaumont is only shut down for a short period of time because we had a proper fund balance to get people's lights back on, to get streets open, all of these things. So I understand all of the concerns that we all have. But right now is a crucial time, and we have to make decisions not based on wants. Because really, we can't make a decision just based on this fiscal year. Because we've already heard about some of the challenges we're going to have next year, next fiscal year, and the following year. I think it's the next, Todd?
Yes, fiscal year '24 and '25 have had wins that we need to address. We'll get a reprieve in '26.
Right, so I understand everybody. And I'm concerned, but I've seen what can happen if we're not prepared in having a good fund balance to respond to the natural disasters. I can understand what happens when, if our bond rating falls, the impact it will have on our ability to go out. And we don't want to tax, overtax the future generations. So these are all things we got to think about. And I'm I just say be cautious about what we do now and take very important considerations to this budget process. And it's there for a reason.
Okay, Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Very quickly, just for clarification, Todd, the reprieve you're talking about in 2026 is industrial agreements that come to an end?
Yes, sir, we have a major
And what kind of relief is that?
We have a tax abatement agreement with one of our industrial companies that their value actually come onto the taxable rolls. And it should generate $5 million of extra revenue. But that's not until 2026.
Can you speed that up? We need it now. Okay, so any other discussion? So I'm going to call for
One more question. Now, at the 68 and a half percent, that is equivalent to increase in revenues for this fiscal year, correct? Because of the appraised values that have gone up?
Correct, it generates an extra 2.6 million.
And every cent goes up 900,000?
Yes, sir, 900 to 930, depending on the collection rate.
But also, whatever we set the tax rate at for residents is going to also affect our industrial?
It does. So industrial values don't always follow commercial and residential.
That's right.
A lot of years when commercial and residential values are going up, industrial values can go down because they're valued at the book value of their refinery. And they depreciate over time. But they also take revenue, their profits, into account when they value those. So when we do set a tax rate and we lower it, typically that will lower the revenue we get from those industrial district agreements. Because their values aren't as volatile as we've seen in the market the last two years from the state comptroller's office mandate.
So can you explain to the public the effect of an ExxonMobil, which is one of our largest industries? How that would affect what's coming in as opposed to where the tax rate is?
Well, without, you know, I wasn't prepared for that question. But obviously, if their value holds the same, some years it does, some years it goes down. We haven't really had the confirmed values this year from Capital Appraisal Group. They come in usually after the residential and commercial. Because they're outside city limits, they're usually not taxed. So they have more time to get those values in. But we should be getting those values within the next couple of weeks. But anyway, if their value stays the same and we lower the tax rate, we lose revenue.
Okay, I just wondered that for the public. Councilmember Getz. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought he said you had, trying to Okay, so I'm going to close.
Next is after you close the workshop, you vote on it? And then you go to public comment at the end?
Yeah, we got to vote. I'm going to go ahead and close the floor for the workshop.
Do you need a motion?
And I'm going to call for a motion.
Read the item?
I'm sorry.
Y'all are ready today.
Mayor and council, we're asking you to consider establishing and taking a record vote on the proposed 2022 tax rate and schedule a public hearing. The administration recommends council establish a proposed tax rate to require to support the city manager's proposed budget equal to the tax rate of, and we had proposed 0.685 for every $100 evaluation. And the administration recommends approval of this as well as setting a public hearing September 13th, 2022 at 1:30 PM in the city council chambers located 801 Main. Administration recommends approval.
Thank you. Discussion, Councilmember Getz.
Well, I make a motion that we adopt a proposed tax rate of 69 and a half cents for $100 valuation. And knowing fully well that after next week, I may support what the administration recommends of 68 and a half. But just to give us a little bit of flexibility as we go into the capital plan discussion, I move that it be set at a proposed rate, tax rate of 69 and a half.
I have a motion on the floor.
Sike.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
No, it has to be a record vote. And also, it was for a public hearing. So does your motion include the public hearing as well?
Yeah, my motion includes a public hearing on that.
Okay, and so Mayor, it's going to be a record vote, so the clerk will call individually.
Record vote, thank you.
Mayor Muntan.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Durio.
Yes.
Councilmember Getz.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Yes.
Councilmember Samuel.
Yes.
And Councilmember Neil.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, the motion carries. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda items. So at this time, I will call for public comment. Again, if you haven't already done so, please fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, to the front of the room. She will call your name at the beginning of your three minutes. And the green light will come on. And at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on, giving you the indication that your time is up. We're ready, thank you.
Vernon Durton, 210 West Berry Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Wow, I'm glad I signed my sheet first to be the first to congratulate Kenneth Williams as the new city manager. We're glad to have you, sir. You come to a great city. And I'm glad you were able to see the first city council meeting. Last week, we saw democracy at work. It was a great thing. Robin did not need her Batman. She was good all by herself. But I'm so glad that you all supported her, those of you that did. And I've heard a lot talked today. But what, I would like not to think that we are expecting more out of Mr. Williams than any other person in the council. Mr. Williams is adopting or inheriting a city that the last city manager was over a decade and lost population. We were 213 when the last city manager came in, we're now 269. So if he just holds population, he's doing good. We've lost population every year. I've also heard consternation and a lot of discussion about salaries and trying to find a way to make some parity. We have our two highest city employees making 200% more than national average. Now we're grabbing about $11. We need to think about that. Here's what Beaumont has shown, that if we work together, we can actually make progress. The city, even though a lot of citizens don't always come up and talk, they're always watching and they're listening. So what we're watching for, no matter what the vote was last week, we're watching and looking for the entire council to work together, which they can, looking for the entire council to support our new city manager and every other city employee. While I don't like coming up here talking all the time about where we are, it's not about where we're going. We have a new city manager. We have a new city council, a new city attorney. Everyone is capable. Let's move our city forward so we can be proud of Beaumont, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durton.
Glenda McCray, 890 Norwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
My youngest I used to be. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
I am Glenda McCray. I just want to say congratulations to the new city manager. Congratulations to everybody. My thoughts and prayers are still with Ms. Getz. I don't know exactly how she's feeling, but I'm still keeping her in my prayers. I live in the west, west end, and I'm upset about the drainage ditches. They are only being mowed twice a year, is what I've been told when I call 311. One side is mowed and it's cut short. But the other side, it's a smaller portion, and it's near the fence to the houses that are on Norwood. And the grass is just growing and growing and growing. And it's choppy and it looks bad. So if y'all are getting cut, since taxes are going up and things are going up and garbage fees are going up and everything's going up, I really would like for that drainage ditch to be kept low. I saw the mosquito people spraying yesterday when I came in yesterday evening. But thank you. I'm proud to be a citizen of Beaumont. I'm proud of the continuity that you all have. Just want us all to work together for a better city. I see a lot of things, but if I see another gas station come up, I'm going to be upset because I think we need to build things for, you know, the young people. You know, but these gas stations are just popping up everywhere. Y'all have a blessed evening, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Charlie, and I'm not really sure how to pronounce the last name, but his address is 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, before, can you mention about the drainage ditch situation? Or Mr. Boone, is that Drainage Ditch City or is that DD6?
Yeah, I'd have to
It's a concrete, it's concrete.
I'd have to find out. And I've got the address, we'll follow up.
Hello, council, mayor, and staff. Thank you for your service to Beaumont. My name is Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive. This has been a very interesting meeting with the budget proposal in the comments. I'd like to comment about the $11 pay rate. I look at it as an entry level pay where you're competing with surrounding businesses. Not, you're not competing with Waco and all the other cities. You may compete with Port Arthur, Orange, and smaller places around. But I think it's attractive to come to work for the city due to the benefits. And yeah, I sure, I love the services of Beaumont, especially the once-a-week trash pickup. I think that really makes our city clean where people's trash don't sit out for a couple of weeks on another schedule. And I also would like to comment on the $250,000 And I also would like to, uh, comment on the $250,000 severance pay that four members of council approved in the event of dismissal of the new, new manager. I realize the vote has been taken to hire Mr. Williams. I do not object to Mr. Williams, just the contract. We vote, the vote split does not bring back memories. The vote split does bring back memories of Beaumont ISD fiasco. I noticed Mr. Williams mentioned the BISD happenings. Do you recall two members of the board and local electrical contractors were sounding alarm that things did not seem right with, with contracts for electricals work? Do you remember the comment of the board chairman when he said, "We are in charge now"? Do you remember there were wrongdoing and the state education chairman came in and dismissed the entire board and the newly hired superintendent? The board majority did not listen to the two council members sounding the alarm. Are we repeating the voting pattern of Beaumont ISD board? I sure hope not. And I want to thank each one of your services. And I always try to listen to the TV, uh, report and I, I like your comments and things. Thank you very much.
Paul Brown, 4370 Cartwright Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you. My hearing has helped, helped going out, but I just want to thank my brothers and my sister for voting to get Brother Williams here. And let's have the laughter and enjoyment, but let's stay real. This country's in trouble. And after 35 city managers, we finally got a black man. We got a big problem in terms of finance. Everything talk about financial, talk about finance both ways. But the black folks always stay at the bottom. Somebody asked me and they said, "Judge, were you excited about the mighty grow?" No, not at all. Did you get your beads and did you get your candy? They had 21 vendors and they had one black woman selling crawfish. 20 other persons made money. We make everybody rich but ourselves. But I liked the way you stood the last time and you said, "It's our time." I like my representative. Said, "Young man's a farmer." Went back and told my wife. And he went back and do some research. His brother started shooting those six names and then said, "One guy had 90,000. He got 176,000 dollars." Then he put the kicker in where he had two helpers. When they talk about 250,000 from Mr. Williams. You just do your math right quick. That was above 250,000. I like that. So I'm not gonna run for that position. And my brother AJ, we just call you Smooth. Just Smooth. The mayor, you'd have to be Joe. You just listen to the stuff over and over again. When I usually do it, I put the names down and how many times do you speak on this issue? How many times do you speak on this issue? And then I cut it off and called for the vote. Some people speak 50 times and they don't want it to go. Then I looked at the dean, that's Artvin Samuel. I want to thank him for so much, for so long. We tried to get the street for Dr. King. That was mean. He cried and Joe Desatell was taking the ball to run it. At that time, we were taking the NAACP to number one in the country. And we went Austin. And the council voted on a Tuesday. I got on Joe Desatell. He said, "What the hell you want me to do?" It was Tuesday. We had a little round. I also like to thank Joe as he conclude his service to us as a representative. That's why I made this shirt. I want everybody to see it. Brothers and sisters, let us stop asking others to do for us. What God has given us, build to ourselves. We don't have to ask black, black folk. We built this country. I didn't have to ever get ready to talk about I'm gonna support black folks. I supported them all my life. I was raised by a preacher. Even a preacher can fool you sometimes. And I asked Ed, my brother, "Where do I stand, Ed?" He says, "Stand by yourself when you're standing with the preacher." Because the preacher is standing with the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. So at this time, uh, we will have council member comments and I'm gonna start with you, councilmember Turner.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, I just wanted to see if we can kinda address the directional flushing plan. I know Corona came back and said we needed to get one. I know staff's been working on one. You know, I think it'll be a good suggestion to see maybe a directional flushing plan task force put together where you have, you know, some of my engineers working with Mr. Harris to see what we can actually come up with and give it a deadline where we want to get at least a percentage done within a year and the rest done within the second year. I think, you know, we talk about a lot of things, but we don't put deadlines on them and it's kinda left out there and they don't never happen. And I just kinda wanna start a new practice when it comes to that. And it's a few things that I've been being questioned about throughout the community and I said I decided to address it today. A lot of people come up to me and said, "AJ, how can you agree to pay a base of 250,000?" But the reality is, average cities our size, base pay is roughly 275,000. So these are facts that need to be out there that people need to know. I asked if we did a salary study and compared to cities our size, what we're actually paying the gentleman that's going to be our new city manager. Have we looked at other salaries? What is our comparison? What are we addressing and based off of? Same thing I asked for today prior to making the decision on employee pay. And we did not conduct the salary study. And Chris Duryo, on last week when we spoke on it, he gave several salary studies that I actually gave to the council that was performed to show that we were not paying a competitive base rate compared to other cities. In this contract negotiation, he, he started off wanting a three-year agreement. That was taken away. He asked for his spouse to be on the insurance. That was taken away. He asked to be on the insurance. That was taken away. So the reality is, there's a lot of facts to this contract that went on, that went both ways and a lot of things were taken away. But that's not the facts that's being released out to the community. I challenge everybody to say, to say they want a better Beaumont, they want a better city. Research on your own, not just what you hear. Research on your own and look at the base salary for other city managers, cities our size. Look at the help and assistance they get. I stress it. We don't have a assistant city manager. Other cities who are doing better than us, thriving and growing, they have a minimum of two. So prior to making these decisions, prior to getting on the internet, prior to reading things, I challenge everybody to research things on your own. And then make your decisions based upon the data and research that you find out. And to piggyback on salaries around this area that we're competing with, we are competing with salaries outside of just other cities. We're competing with restaurants, fast food, the whole nine. And it's restaurants right now, today, in the city of Beaumont paying $19 an hour. And we have people jumping in manholes, fixing issues, getting $11.50. So I do do the research and I challenge everybody to do the research because that's important when you make decisions. You wanna go off data and research. Thank you.
Councilman Turner, I just wanna make one correction. Um, the original ask was for Mr. Williams and his spouse to be, um, their insurance premium to be paid by the city. They do have access to insurance, just like all the other city employees. We're just not paying the premium.
But to be clear, he, he asked for it and that's something we did take out, correct?
Yes, sir. The, the original ask was for, uh, for the city to pay that premium. Um, the compromise was that he'd have access to insurance like the other city employees with premium paid by them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz.
Thank you, mayor. And, you know, a couple of points I also wanna make, and not to reveal, the vote's been taken. So, um, I wanna welcome you, Mr. Williams, to Beaumont, your wife Cynthia. Uh, I'm looking forward to working with you. We had a very good conversation yesterday. I think we, uh, share a lot of the same vision for Beaumont and, and I'm looking forward, uh, to helping make Beaumont better with you at the helm. But to just address a couple of the points you made, Councilman Turner, the insurance premium request was taken away because it didn't comply with city policy. The request for a three-year, uh, commitment was taken away because of the city charter not allowing it. So some of the things that were taken away were requests that Mr. Williams may have made and, you know, we, we could not accommodate for one reason or the other. But I do agree with you that a salary study probably should have been performed. It should have been performed before we set what we were offering. You know, because we all got together as a council and decided, well, what are we gonna put in our package out there to offer potential candidates? And we decided 250. So that would have been the best time to say, well, is this competitive? You know, we, we all at that time thought that it was good. So that's what we offered. Uh, that's what he accepted. And that's what he's here, uh, working for now. So, uh, I'm excited about having the opportunity to work with you, Mr. Williams. The other thing I'm excited about is tonight, some other place is having a tasting. And it begins at 5 o'clock. It's their annual fundraiser that they haven't been able to do for the last three years. Uh, you know, because of COVID, but they do have it tonight. Uh, it's gonna be right next door over at the Civic Center. Is that right? Okay. And, uh, tickets are $10. And they need that money to help the less fortunate in our area, particularly the homeless. Uh, they're doing some really, really good things at some other place. And, uh, I'm honored to be able to serve as the mayor's chair on the homeless coalition. So I'm working with their new executive director, um, you know, who's got some very bold ideas as to what we can do to help, uh, you know, ease our homeless situation. But they need support and this is their big fundraiser. So, uh, go out and what you'll see when you get there is a bunch of organizations that have booths that they have cooked and have their own specialty food items. Uh, our synagogue, for instance, is, uh, serving noodle kugel, uh, which is a kind of a sweet noodle dish. It's kinda like a dessert. It's very good. Uh, urge you to come out there and, uh, have some. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Duryo.
Thank you, mayor. Of course, I wanna welcome Mr. Williams also and his wife. And I just wanna say, I'm, I'm, I really believe that everyone on this council is ready to go to work with Mr. Williams and to work with Mr. Williams. And I would just ask the citizens to be patient and trust us to do the job that you guys elected us to do. Also, I wanna thank all the citizens that spoke. Um, one of them said he doesn't like to come up here and speak, but I think he really does. Also, I wanna thank all the department heads that spoke, answered our questions for us and staff and everyone for, uh, preparing the budget. That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Neil.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to say thank you to Todd, your staff for this budget. I know you guys put in an enormous amount of time on this thing in the last several months and appreciate the work that you guys and, uh, with assistance of Mr. Boone put in on this thing. And also like to say welcome to the Williams and look forward to working with you guys. And, uh, it's gonna be a new day for Beaumont coming, so excited to be part of the team.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
I'm just joining in welcoming, uh, Ms. Cynthia and Kenneth Williams to Beaumont. It's a great place to live. We look forward to your helping make it much better. We already there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felschau.
Thank you, mayor. Last week, this council voted to hire Mr. Williams as our next city manager. I've said more than once that this may be the most important decision that we make while sitting on council. The last time we did this was 19 years ago. I just wanna again make it clear to the public and especially to Mr. Williams and his wife here today that my no vote was not a vote against the man, but was a vote against certain components within the agreement that I struggled with. My problem, and the council's problem, is I, we don't have a mechanism whereby we can vote for the man, but against the agreement because they're, they're linked. And so it is a struggle. Also, I want Mr. Williams to know that the council was asked to submit five names, their five top candidates, to Baker Tilly. And I submitted my five. And in my five, Mr. Williams, you were one of them. And I want you to know that, that I saw you on that list and, and I went through the interviews. I say that because I want you to get a clean, fresh start with, with me, that my concerns was with the agreement. But I want to publicly say to you that I am committed to working with you and to making you a success because your success is our success. And I know that we all dream of a better Beaumont. And so that's why I say this. Because last week, I cast a business vote publicly. So today, I'll cast a relational vote and say, "I will commit myself to serving with you and making sure that you're a success because we need you. We need you to be a success. We need Beaumont to go forward because we all, as I said, dream of a better, a better Beaumont." So welcome. And, uh, to Cynthia, welcome. And I look forward to the future and the great things that we're gonna do together. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Boone.
Yes, mayor and council, I would just like to extend a welcome to Mr. and Mrs. Williams, uh, I guess more broadly, welcome to Beaumont. Uh, but more specifically, I look forward to working with Mr. Williams, uh, for a better and brighter Beaumont.
Thank you. Ms. Reed. Thank you. Todd.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to say we all love what Benji Williams does for the city. He's still sitting right here. He might not appreciate me saying this, but rumor has it, he might have a year, four months and 16 days left with the city. So if y'all could help me talk him out of retiring, I would appreciate that. Also, um, the finance department, thank you, Benji. Also, the finance department had a rough year this year. In the last eight months, we lost the city comptroller of 17 years and lost my budget officer. So I would like to personally thank in this meeting today if Cheryl Ray would stand up. She's the new city comptroller. She's only been here a few months and has already proven to be a great asset. And then Stephanie Hardy, would you stand up?
Oh, she's already left.
Doggone. She was here earlier. She's our new budget officer. Um, she brings, brings a great deal of talent to that budget area and we appreciate their work on putting this budget together along with all the department heads that took the time out of their schedules to meet with us this year to get, get this document ready to present to you guys.
Thank you. And our city clerk, Tina Bresser.
Mr. and Mrs. Williams, I just wanna congratulate Mr. Williams and welcome you guys to Beaumont. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Well, it's down to me and, uh, they're waiting on me next door. I'm a judge for the tasting for some other place. And, uh, they've been informed that meeting is still going on, but I'll be over there shortly. But, um, if any of you missed last week, uh, city council meeting, that was one of the best meetings that, to see municipal government in action. There was a, a lot of back and forth. But when you have an issue as big as hiring a new city manager, you will get, you will get that. Uh, I will say it was a healthy meeting and I will say, um, go back and tune in and, and look at that meeting. I was quite proud of the way, uh, the meeting was ran. And with saying that, uh, I wanna thank our city attorney for the back and forth and the changes and the revisions and, uh, the late nights, the weekends of what you did to pull that contract together. Cheryl, thank you so very much for your work. And Mr. Williams, to you and Ms. Cynthia, welcome to Beaumont. And I truly, truly look forward, uh, to work with you. I ran on building a better Beaumont and God said he was gonna send me some help. And so, Mr. Help, thank you so very much. And so, Mr. Help, thank you so very much and I look forward to working with you. And Ms. Cynthia, happy house hunting. As, you know, as someone said, your money does go a little further in Beaumont than it does in Buddha. So have fun while you're shopping and again, look forward to working with you and safe travels back home this afternoon. And we will see you on September 6th. Is this official, if not before? Right. So officially, we will see you back September 6th. In addition to that, I had a visitor yesterday after our planning and zoning meeting. I had a visitor who's 10 years old and I told her that I would make this announcement. Ms. Destiny Hamilton had a question for me and Mr. Boone came in and got me. She had a very, very important question. She wanted to know if we were planning on expanding our Beaumont Animal Care to allow more animals so that we would not kill any of the animals. And so I was pleased to tell her that Beaumont Animal Control since 2019 is no longer a kill shelter. So the only event that an animal will be put to sleep is if it's a vicious animal that they would have no other choice but to put to sleep. But officially, Beaumont Animal Care is a no-kill shelter. So Destiny, thanks for the question. In addition to that, back to the contract and the vote on last week, there were many, many concessions made by both sides. Whenever you're dealing with a contract, it's gonna be compromises on both sides. And when you're compromising with seven different people and one person is vying for the best contract that's gonna fit their position and their family, of course, they're gonna work for what's best for their benefit and their family. And of course, we're elected to look over the tax dollars of the citizens of Beaumont and we want to make sure that we're doing what we are elected to do and to be good stewards over those tax dollars. So all in all, I believe that we did come to a good compromise and we're gonna move forward from that. In addition to that, Todd, to you and your staff and to the new members that are on board, thank you for all of the hard work. Those minders are really, really thick and it's a lot of work, so God bless you. I'm glad we did not have all of that work to do and, you know, it's a lot of man-hours that goes into that work. So again, thank you so very much for all of that. So with all of that being said, thank each and every one of you for coming out today and as I always say, spread the love and thank you for coming and we are adjourned.